Do I have anybody in the audience who would like to do public comment? I see some head shaking, so we will proceed. Thank you. Okay. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the school committee retreat meeting on August 8th, 2021. On this one. I'm sorry, August 11th, 2021. My apologies. And the regular meeting minutes for September 9th and October 7th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve? And it may approve. So here a second.
Second tonight.
Tonight and all in favor? Aye. Thank you. My date keeper has told me that it is actually the 7th. Know why we're heading. I'm having a hard time with this, but I apparently. Okay. And then the October minutes were the 7th or the 9th?
So then the regular meeting from October 7th.
Okay. And then the regular meeting minutes from September.
No, we got minutes from October 7th.
That was 11.
Yes.
And regular meeting October 7th.
Okay. Right, because we did. I'm so sorry. Yes. And then the executive session. Okay. So just to make sure that we're clear on that, because I always like guests to know exactly what we're holding for. The school committee retreat meeting on August 11th, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes for October 7th. And. And that's it. Right? Thank you. So do I, do we continue to have an approval for that, for that motion? Okay. Thank you very much. So. And we all unanimously approved, right? Okay.
You approved the October 7th.
I'm getting it. Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve and retain the executive session minutes for the August 11th and October 7th meetings?
Proven and retained.
I said the proven and retained. Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Leo moves and. And do I hear a second?
A second, Megan Glenn.
Megan Glenn, okay. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The motion passes unanimously and we will table September 9th to our next meeting for the executive session. All right. Speeding right through right now, we're actually on to new business. And that is the high school opening report as well as the NEASC accreditation report. All right, so.
So we have Robert, Stephanie, and Brenda here tonight.
Great.
I know they'll be taking turns during this presentation, but Robert's going to kick us off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you personally.
Yeah.
I feel like it's been a while. So I'm very pleased to be here tonight to talk a little bit about our openings. I'm not sure if you looked at the calendar, but we've now been in school for two months, so. It's flying by. And certainly, I think we'd all agree that we're in a much better spot than we was 12 months ago. So we just want to talk a little bit about our opening and as Dr. Marsen said, we'll, we'll also go into NEAP and give you an update in terms of where we are with the reports there. And some of their findings. But talking about, you know, the high school here, I call it the kind of healthy crazy business effect. We've got a lot of things happening at school and it's exciting to get all our activities back. Brenda's going to talk a little bit about some of the activities and some of what she's been working with students. But we are close to almost business as usual, and I think that we're all very, very pleased about that. So just a few updates and some activities that are happening. So our fall theater is well underway. It's called the Brinkle in Time, a production that's going to be happening in a couple of weeks in front of a live audience. So our students are very excited about that, so be on the lookout for opportunities to go and watch our students perform. Our music department hosted two concerts last week, also in front of parents and families, so that's exciting as well. Sports begins playoffs this week. Girls and boys soccer, girls volleyball, field hockey, we're qualified for state playoffs. Athlete team just finished third in the state finals last week, and our boys and girls cross country teams are getting ready for their postseason league. So there's a lot happening here at school. Last Friday, we held our first pep rally in two years at high school. We held an outside pep rally, which we've never done before, and I think that the consensus was it was nice. It was nice outside, a little colder than we wanted.
Only if you're from LA. The rest was fine. He was cold.
People bundled up. We'll definitely look at that point forward in terms of an outdoor event. This gave us a lot more space. I gave the hosts and students a lot more space for their activities, so we were able to use the field for some of the events. So it really worked out well, so we're possibly looking at a possible shift to, to more of an outside event going forward. And I want to thank our student council advisors. They did a lot of work in prep and putting that together for, for the school celebration. So it was just nice to get our group together, the entire learning community for the first time in a couple of years. Our challenge success team will be meeting soon, and Chris Haren will be returning to mental health school in February to work with our juniors and seniors. Obviously, the big item for us this year has been the new schedule. We're now two months into our schedule, and I'm pleased where we are, because I told, you know, our staff here. Every year, it's such a challenge to get our freshmen transitioned into the building with a new schedule, and this year, we have to do it for all four grades. We knew it'd be a lot of work, it'd be a little messy to begin with, but as we're two months in, like I said, I'm very pleased where we are. We've made a couple of adjustments already to our schedule, and I think our students are beginning to settle in. For the most part, the teachers are finding the 67 minutes to be a good time for timeframe for the curriculum. As you recall from our old schedule, we had certain days that were 43-minute periods and others were 90s. So now we've gone to 67-minute periods, and that seemed to settle in well for everyone. The big change, of course, is flex, although we have to. I hope you've heard a lot about that. Just a quick overview again, flex happens five times over the course of an eight-day cycle. And each flex, what we did, and when we presented it to you last year, I'm not sure if we were this far along, but what we decided to do was divide the flex period into two periods. The 67-minute timeframe can be long for some of what our students needed, so students have the option of breaking the 67 minutes and a half. So seeing one teacher the first half of flex and another teacher the second half of flex. They can see a teacher for the entirety of the flex. They can do a study and then go see a teacher. They can see a guidance counselor in there. So there's a lot of, I guess, pun intended, flexibility. That goes along with it, and that's really the design of it, is to really give our students opportunities to make choices, to determine what is it they need. You know, the after-school help is still there on a more limited basis, but we know that our students always struggle with that, so many activities. Some of our students work and trying to get, you know, the help that they needed after school was challenging for some of our students' families. So to be able to have that time now, five times over the course of an eight-day cycle during the school day, has been great. As I've mentioned, we've made a few adjustments along the way. For example, this learning space, which we redesigned this summer. It doesn't quite do it justice with the school committee setup, but it's a really fantastic place for students. Our students are really excited about it. They like to come here and do work during, during flex. But the, the number of students who wanted to use it exceeded the number of places that we had. So we had to make some changes. It was, you know, our students have a day, day one where they sign up for the flex classes. Well, this was gone, or it was almost like Red Sox tickets coming to go on sale. And within 30 seconds, it was booked for the week. So we were hearing from students, "Gosh, I want to get in there, but I just can't get in there." So we made an adjustment over the last week or so, where we've asked students to only book themselves for one time in here during the cycle. So what we're starting to see are just different faces than here, which is good. And students have commented that they enjoy the incentive of having access to the library now.
Rob, can you just expand a little bit on how students get to pick during flex, how that's done?
Yeah, so, so we still have advisory in flex. So if you remember our advisory program that we used to have, that is still happening. So on the first day of the cycle, it's sort of called flex one. Every flex one, our students determine where they're going to be for their other, for flex for that cycle. So the students can choose to go sign up to see their math teacher. They can go choose to come to the library. They can go choose to see a guidance counselor, come down to the main office. So they sort of plan out their entire cycle. One of the pieces of advice that we've heard from other schools was to sort of keep it at one cycle at a time, if you will. Because you don't want to book, you don't want students really booking too far ahead. If you think about eight days, eight days can be almost two weeks at school. So and even, you know, when talking to students, even getting towards that end of the cycle is challenging to book the week before. So we do give the students ability to change some of their assignments, you know, later on in the cycle if they realize, "Oh, I don't need to see a teacher now." And vice versa, if they do realize that toward the end of the cycle, they need to see somebody that they didn't sign up for on day one, they can do that as well. At the same time, teachers can also request to see students, guidance counselors, and request to see students. So this was all the work that we really didn't have time for. Guidance counselors had to see students during class or sometimes during lunch, so we didn't have that built in. And as I mentioned earlier, students really only have the opportunity to see teachers for the most part after school. So again, having that time during school day has been really beneficial to them. So one piece of information that has been helpful for us, or a data source for us has been, so we talked to them, we asked them questions. Like, as I told faculty, one of the nice things about flex is that we sort of control it here, and we're going to adjust and modify it as need be at some point down the road. We're going to open up different opportunities for students throughout the building, and a lot of that is going to come in student feedback. So a week or two ago, we sent a survey out to students just to get a sense of how they were using flex, particularly how the new schedule is working. So Brenda's going to talk a little bit about some of those data results, as well as just some of the activity work she's doing. Before she comes up, and I know it's sort of a formal introduction, Brenda's been an incredible addition to our community here. If you haven't had a chance to meet her yet, her perspective on things and sort of her experience has really helped shape a lot of what we're doing with our new schedule. So we super excited to have her on board of the great work of the summer. So it's my pleasure to, like, formally introduce Brenda Hagan as one of our students. She's going to talk a little bit about the survey work.
Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, Robert.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Pleasure to see you first.
Nice to see you.
So a little bit about the, the flex survey. So we, we surveyed about 500 students completed the survey. And just, I'll just give you some of the general highlights. So overall, as you heard when the student presented last time, they, they seem very satisfied with the flex schedule, the new schedule. They like the rotating classes that allow teachers and students both to have a break, not see every class every day. They might have two nights to do their homework, you know, per class. Teachers like that. They can, can plan a little longer class, but also have a little more time for preparation for those other classes that don't need every day. Some students say that 67 minutes feels a little long. You know, we have our middle schoolers who are, last year, I think, had 35-minute classes, but nine days last year. So it's just something to think about. The data shows that students are using flex in a variety of ways, and we were, we're wondering, you know, are most kids staying in their home flex, or, you know, what are they doing? So it shows they're using the writing center, they're coming to the library, they're seeing their guidance counselor, they're going to a college information session. They're studying. Only 10% of students said that they had never, they have never left their home flex. And then, like Robert was saying, we made some changes based on student and staff feedback at the library. The, the students also wanted to open up the senior lounge, so we did that. We have a small, limited number of spaces in the senior lounge during flex. Some of them are just kind of doing their homework together. It's a nice little, small space for them to hang out. Students also want expanded choices for flex, so like Robert was saying, in the future, we might open up the track. Seniors want some senior privileges. We need to think about, but that was, that was heard loud and clear also in the survey. So overall, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a win, the flex and then the rotating schedules. Kids are saying that their stress is lower. This is just anecdotal, you know, talking to students. So I know we've talked a lot about flex. So I just want to talk about a couple of other things. So advisory, and it goes together with flex. It meets about once a month. The, the planning committee for advisories are Lisa Lusio, one of our guidance counselors, and Perry Oasis, one of our social studies teachers, and Heather Rendles and myself. So we meet regularly to talk about advisory and, you know, the, the theme or the, I guess, the, I don't know if it's a theme, but it's like kind of the focus of advisory this year. We're calling it reconnect, reflect, rebuild, all the kind of re, like, starting over. So, you know, the reengage. So September and October, we're focused on reconnecting. So, you know, brand-new advisories, new mix of people, so a lot of icebreakers getting into the activities. Reengaging, they had a very successful scavenger hunt last week. So we asked students and staff for feedback to refine our advisory program, so there's a student advisory, a student advisory committee to advisory. And we also sent out a survey to teachers. So it's, it's, it's funny, because the, the challenges and the suggestions for future advisory really was students and teachers had similar things to say. So they both said that the top challenges of advisory are like separating advisory from flex. So, you know, there's the same group of people, it's the same adults, same kids, but it really has a different focus. So while flex is more academically focused, advisory is really more social and emotional. So finding ways to, you know, students feel pressure to get work done, so some students want to get their work done during advisory. So really trying to carve out that space for advisory, so it's advisory, not flex. And kids are saying that being in a, in a classroom still feels like class, so maybe thinking about ways to take out the slideshows, do something a little different. So suggest some suggestions for future activities, really like teachers and students kind of saying things, which sounds great. Activities with movement, going outside, having structured competition between advisories, which is a scavenger hunt paper. Promoting school spirit by uniting the student body on shared activities, facilitating conversation on school-wide topics. Maybe a current event or something happening in school. Opportunities to meet with a grade level above or below them for advice discussions. There are a lot of things here, but post, post-assembly discussions, targeting supports for ninth graders, future planning. So a lot of the data as we plan the next eight advisories, I continue to see feedback in ways to find who the reengaging, reconnecting. We'll, we'll, but I'll, I'll great feedback. Last thing I'm going to talk about is the clubs. We have over 33 clubs represented at our club fair in September. Kids are super excited to get back into their clubs. They want to connect with each other. They want to go back to feeling, you know, quote-unquote, normal. We have a few new clubs, a couple of new clubs, but a few new clubs that have partnered with local organizations and that are very kind of giving back to the community focus. So just, I'm getting a sense, kids want to connect, they want to get back, they want to feel that community. So we have three new clubs, one's called Family Promise. The other ones are Dignity Matters and Medfield Community Cares. Something to explore further that I've been talking with just Sabres, student council advisor, is about expanding our idea of what student leadership needs at the school. We have a lot of very, very strong student leaders, so really trying to harness that energy, unifying the school, and thinking about what, what do we want student leadership to look like going forward? So. And just the last thing I'll say, you know, last week was Spirit Week. It started with School Colors Day or the Class Colors Day. You guys did an amazing job decorating the hallways for wanting school spirit. Started with, like, this kind of class identity, and it ended with Blue White Day, Medfield Friday, and I just, I really felt like. School's starting to come along again, and the kids are so excited. They pulled off an amazing pep rally. And it just, it felt like not only a celebration of fall sports and athletics, but also just a celebration of, like, being together as a community again. Overall, my first couple of months here have been super positive, so happy to be here. So thank you for your time and happy to take any questions. So what was that first class, perhaps? Oh, a family promise?
Yeah, what's that?
It's, um, they're, it's a student who volunteers with this organization to help homeless.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm working on updating the website with all the new clubs and stuff.
Oh, well, I've appreciated, I've appreciated even the tone of your emails and, and your, your frequent communications, so thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a question about, you said you surveyed the students about how they use flex and what their thoughts are. Was there any sort of data gathered from teachers? I would just like to see how it's affecting them.
Yeah, so the first couple of weeks of school, we, we sent out a survey that was like about the tweaking of flex. So we got their input in terms of, you know. It was a lot about like how to use it, you know, about the app and all of that.
Right. So it may be revisiting later on. Maybe revisiting in the semester to see, like, you know, if it.
Yeah.
You know. Learning or.
Yeah, create some good data about, you know, how many students they're seeing.
Right.
So we've had, we've anecdotally, like, but it's been a couple of meetings, but yeah.
And I know the, so the, the application that we use for my flex learning. And that's been a really big difference, like, us being able to track which students are, not only during the day, but also seeing where they're going, seeing what they're seeing. So their advisory teacher can actually look at a list of their students to see their activity during, during flex and make some adjustments as well. But the, the app itself, which is new to us, a couple of schools have done programs that have recommended it. And that's been really, really important for us, just to be able to monitor where students are. I know that, just meeting with a teacher the other day, she was saying that, you know, she had reached out to a family, and a great piece of data was that she's like, "Well, I'm looking at, at his, my flex learning. He has someone from this community watching, so we can track some of that information." So this, the data is really helpful, not only knowing where students are, which is important during the school day at every moment, but, but also just being able to see patterns. And then, you know, again, we got some of that information that we use to make some of the decisions more accurate, so it's been really helpful for us.
I had a question. You said that flex is more academic oriented. What about, like, organizational or any, because that kind of bridges somewhere between academic and SEL. But it seems like it might be workshops or.
I mean, like, in terms of executive functions.
Yeah, I think in more executive functioning or things like that, that's kind of a role in place you can go. Is anything like that offered?
Yeah, well, we do have something called Academic Success Center, and so students can go see and get some help there as well during flex period. And again, I think with a lot of the programs are so new to our students, I think they're all just trying to figure out their way towards these areas. They can, you know, go to the writing center and seek out other sources as well, so. And obviously, the guidance counselor, I mean, that's been, you know, seeing the guidance or any other support staff during that time. School psychology, adjustment counselor, all of those folks are accessible during that time. They don't have advisors, so they are available during the flex period, so. That's going to change for us, because our guidance counseling mothers had their own advisory, but we needed them freed up to be available to students. So now students can go do them during that time. And I think that, you know, we talked a lot about the flex is, it's going to grow, the options are going to grow. Trying to say, you know, I think we're going to get to a point where students can choose that they're in good standing and they don't have anything, or they need to go for a walk. These will walk around a track for 30 minutes, so they can go down the way and go work that. You know, some of our musicians might be able to access some of the tutorials. So we're, I think we're just still getting comfortable with the idea of flex and the, and the movement of students. But I do think there's going to come a time before the school year is over, where we'll be able to open up more options for students during that time. And like anything, they're busier, as you know from your, your kids, they're busier times of the year than others. So as we start getting towards the end of term, and, you know, right before holidays, things get a little busy, so I imagine students will be spending a lot of time with teachers. And then when we get on the other side of that, students have a little bit of downtime, so I think they'll access some of those other places as well. So we'll try to open up, you know, hopefully before the year goes.
One of the, I'm sorry. One of the things that Carrie and Brenda and the other student, class, year representatives, we met a few weeks ago after our first student advisory meeting. And we'll meet here again in December, but we kind of put together a little bit of a schedule around how we can restructure that time. And one of the things that really came up was, one, kind of being able to go back in, like, maybe in February, when they meet. And we reflect on what the schedule and the flex and everything else looks like, once we've gotten through most of the year. Because I think we spent a lot of time kind of discussing about how kids come in. But it's also, one of the things that I was really impressed by, when I met with, with Brenda and the rest of the kids and the students, is that. They were so very focused on the idea of mental health and SEL for everybody and making that. And this was so self-generated, and I left it, we'll talk about it in December. Talking about how kids can get access to kind of support before they even really need support, the capital S. But how do you find that advisory? Who is that trusted adult? You know, it's not somebody you just sit with in flex and meet once a month, but how do you realize that that person, you know, how does your advisory leader communicate that to you? And how do you communicate that to your advisory leader? That, that that is a trusted adult that you can talk to, that can get you in the right place, you know, kind of those connections, which I thought was really. It taught me a lot about advisory and kind of the point of, of where you guys are trying to go in terms of SEL. One of the other reflections I've heard is that the flex period does seem to help teachers communicate much better when you have a kid who needs additional support. Because there is this level of, like, this kid's having this problem here. I haven't seen that flex yet. Are there other teachers out there, you know, like, how are we helping support this kid and more people know? And I think that that's one of the things that can be really challenging about high school, is that sometimes a kid doesn't always have that, that central person who knows. You know, something more about them than going through. You know, and it doesn't all fall to the guidance, and it doesn't all fall, it's, you get more of a community around it. And I think of that flex in my understanding of it and what I've heard from my son and other people is that it kind of does give you a bit of a more community. You know, you do have a minute to breathe during the day to, to be able to really think about, okay, who, who's here and who's not here right now? I do think it's a great thing.
Yeah, but we have to remember sometimes, you know, learning at 2:30 after a long day is hard.
Yeah.
You know, you shadow. And it, and so to be able to have that time in the morning, closer, you know, the first ones were at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, and 10:11 or 10:30, 11:00. So to be able to have that time in the morning, I think is very helpful for a lot of us, just that timeframe.
And not always having that same super brain-heavy, intense class that may not be your preferred class, or the thing that you know that you are best at. It takes a lot more work, not always having that at 2:30, you know, that they kind of cycle throughout the day.
So flex happens, like I said, five days out of an eight-day cycle are absolutely welcome, we just swing by if you want to ever, you know, walk through the building and think, just think, think of what it looks like. Be more than happy to come by and show you sort of the different things students are doing. And, you know, a couple of years ago, students are completely, they're new shadows and students. If you're ever interested.
I'll be back in too. Just have to get back to, like, normal.
Yeah, I know, and it's, it's good. It's a good exercise. I'm happy to set that up for you. It's a good role.
Quick question. How are you tracking the scheduling and, like, when a student is going to see a teacher versus coming to the library and kind of that pattern recognition?
So it's the advisory teacher. So every student has an advisory teacher, and, and sort of the next level of this that we're taking this year is, just earlier. So under the old model, our advisory teachers, and I was one, you know, we only met with the students once every three weeks or so, and we only had them for eighteen hours. That was it. So over the course of the year, you did get to know them, and I have my students for three years, they're seniors now. And I did get to know them, but I didn't get to know them as well as their class and teachers. Under this format, their advisory teachers see them just as much as they see many of the students, because they're seeing them five times over the eight-day cycle. So that next level relationship building is happening. And with that, being able to monitor students and monitor where they're going. Advisory teachers can see how students are doing in certain classes. Say, hey, listen, it looks like we might be struggling a little bit in this particular class. I've noticed you've not signed up to go meet with, say, your English teacher, wanted to set up a couple of times. So they're truly advising to, based on, based on what data they have, and then as we get on through the year, I mean, of course, should they have with them?
Yes, that specific appointment, is that like Google Doc or some sort, how are they making that appointment with the teacher?
Through the. Yeah, so the teacher has been, and guidance and support staff have scheduled kids and. You know, actually, what we've run into a couple of them, that they're sort of, teachers vying for the same student at the same time. Teachers are needing to communicate with each other, they say, okay, you're going to, you know, have the student, you know, during flex three, A, might want to take them to B. So there definitely is, is some communication that has to happen with teachers, and that part we're still sorting out. We're not quite there yet, but it's just constant reminders. You know, and one of the things that we've asked our teachers is to, when possible, have conversations with the students. You know, if you go in, you want to see a student, you see the student has signed up to some, for something, then let's try to have a conversation. The app actually has a really neat chat feature that we use. And I'd rather teachers have a conversation with the students, say, hey, listen, I'd love to see you during, on Thursday, flex A. It looks like you signed up to go, whatever. Can you come by, you know, you know, my classroom at that time, or can we do something like B or the next one? So, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where, and it's happened a couple of times, with students, they're frustrated, just have what they have signed up for. Was switched by a teacher, because the teacher needs to see the student, but we've asked teachers that wouldn't possible. Make sure you have those conversations with students to make it more collaborative. And, you know, at the end of the day. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I think students are probably off more for a study than maybe seeing a teacher. But, um, I'd like, I want those conversations and communication to happen so that students aren't feeling as if, you know, doesn't matter what I sign up for, it's going to get switched anyway. Um, we want that communication, um, that's like teaching to students. So that's still a working project for sure.
Is there any ways, um, and I don't want to revisit the student schedule. But it seems like moving gradually thinking, why not eight days? You know, wouldn't be great if you knew you had it.
Eight days.
Eight out of eight.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, well, I mean.
No, I know that, it would be like, hey, sixty seven minutes, five out of eight.
Yeah.
Fifty two minutes, eight out of eight, right? What are the pros and cons? You know, like, I don't want to solve for that now, I'm just thinking like, ever improvement for twenty three.
Poor Heather Mendoza sitting.
Well, I know, I, it's part of the S E L, I watched.
Took twenty years to get to this point.
I know.
But I love, I love this question for a simple man.
This is thinking about twenty thirty.
Last, you know, one of the things we discovered is there are just lots of different models. And, you know, and what one, what might work for one community. You know, sort of what landed here is, I think we took a little bit of, of some of what we heard from, from school, but not everything. And we kind of now have this flex that is a little different than what we've seen everywhere else, it's based on our needs. Um, I know that going from seven classes a day to five has been a big, um, something that students have really appreciated. And that's a day, whatever, the whole, remember our old schedule on those block days, they saw a teacher, if you were classed on those days, which during that few, less homework on those days. So I think that the seven day, the five day classes, um, you know, the course of the cycle, I think is, is a good number for us, it was a good transition from where we were. Um, yeah, who knows, we'll be five, eight, nine years from now, but, uh, you know, so far it's good at least in terms of frequency, that, you know, what, uh, stuff that's happening right now.
Does anyone have questions about specifically about, um, the high school opening? And then maybe we need to start to get out of time to, to also talk about the N E S.
Yeah, that also is quickly, yeah. Um, so a couple of things, first of all, I appreciate that you, you're going into this mindfully and evaluating the students, questioning, you know, that spirit of continuously improving, so thank you. I have a question, two questions about advisory. One is, does the advisory teacher follow the kids? I mean, if the spirit is another trusted adult, I'm just wondering if the advisory travels together through their four years. And second.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, because there's a lot of thought that actually went into that. So our old model, we did, we saved with our students before here. Uh, but the number of times we met the students was a lot less than now. I will say that Stephanie laugh when I say this all the time, I went into it, into the new model thinking that we're like, of course, we're going to stay. For four years, not fully do this. And, and the more and more we started having conversations and thinking about it, it's a lot of time. So the students meet with their advisory teacher as much as they need within, because it's the same amount of time. And we're all human, some combinations work great and sometimes they don't work great. And some combinations of students work great and sometimes they don't. And with the amount of meeting time that we were having throughout the course of the year, we thought not only A, might, that might be too much. Uh, B, it certainly gives our teachers an opportunity to develop some really deep relationships with students because they're seeing them frequently. And then C, if, if I'm a student, well, now I've got four advisory teachers that I'm going to know really well as opposed to one. And I'm going to, I'm going to have advisory with a different mix of students every year as well. So we just felt like that variety, different learning styles, different, um, personalities. Uh, given the frequency in which these, these flexes were meeting over the course of the year, we felt that sort of tossing it up in the air, if you will, and mixing it up for, uh, at the end of the year, a mixture was the way to go. We also, um, made a concerted effort to not, and we had discussions about this too. Our teachers, we don't have many teachers, pardon me, that's just teacher one level, grade level, we don't have a whole, I could teach multiple levels. Some teach primarily freshmen and stuff like whatnot. But then there was the conversation of, well, should the advisory teacher be a teacher of that grade level? And we actually made a concerted effort to not have that happen, more so for just the variety. So, um, again, it's just a, another adult that a student may never have as a teacher here at Medfield High School. But hopefully it's built into their relationship through advisory of the course of, they're a freshman or a sophomore year, so that was a thing behind it.
Super, yeah, that's great. And then my second and last question is, so for the advisory themes or whatever it is, is it for the all four years? Or do you have some things for like executive functioning for, or study skills for freshmen? And then something totally college preparedness or whatever, stress management for seniors?
We're thinking that, well, we're going to differentiate. So, so we're, it's still kind of a rebuilding year, so we're trying to kind of base on the time of year, based on what we feel like kids are needing.
Yeah, and under our old model, we did have different, um, activities and things for advisories at times based on the grade level.
Right.
So, um, like I had juniors last year, so we did a lot of more college stuff with them where the freshman and advisor didn't do much of that.
Anyone else, and then, I mean, obviously they're still here, but, um, if I want to go on to the accreditation part, there's, um, yeah, one more, and then almost a follow up on N E S.
Have you ever thought of like advisory as mentors? Like you, you kind of think of it in that way? And then, you know, like a little bit of the thought on what's the process of how you would assign, you know, teacher A to a student or is there much? And I know, you know, this is the first year, so just a general comment on that. It sounds, the way you're describing it, it, it sounds like it's, it's taken on a flavor of it, which I think sounds, you know, like I like what you said. Not having their teachers as an advisory is kind of nice because it's an outside perspective. You know, so just.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we certainly, there are, there are times where we can fit certain students with certain advisors. And I just think that, you know, some of our students might need someone else that we know of. Um, but in general, we, we do try to just mix it up. And again, not only mix up, uh, for the sake of the student advisor, uh, but also the student and the, the students that the key or she has, having an advisory with. We think both of those, um, having some, uh, diversity in there from year to year is important. You know, the only thing I would say is it's probably like any math, science, English teacher or student might have, sometimes it clicked with one and, you know, and it works great, that's awesome. And sometimes you don't, and, but there's a lot to learn through those processes as well. So, um, you know, in a building of seventy, some odd teachers and eight hundred students, um, you know, it's always going to be hard to, to be very specific with who's going to be with who over the course of the year. But, um, there are times where we definitely do look at the configuration, um, and what a student might need and who my advisory teachers are and kind of know.
Thank you. Dr. Mars, now if you want to introduce the second part of this, uh.
Sure, I would just want to thank, you know, Robert, Brenda, I know Heather's not here, but all the work that they have done and the teachers at the high school have done to really make this positive change for kids. And we've heard it at a couple of meetings already, and I think that the kids are really, um, taking to this new schedule well. And, and really understanding that we've really focused on S E L for the last, you know, four or five years. And this is a nice culmination to that at the high school, so we appreciate the work you've done on that.
Thank you. So you want some short shift into the N E S?
Sure.
And I'll take a public comment, if anybody wants to do a public comment on any part of the high school presentation after the N E S.
Absolutely. Um, so we also want to follow up with our, uh, reaccreditation report as you, as you've seen. Um, so with us here tonight is Stephanie Worley, Stephanie is our, uh, guidance director. Stephanie also happens to be our co-chair, uh, for this two year process. Stephanie and Melinda Lowman, who have planned to come, but wasn't able to speak this night. And I just want to thank, you know, both Stephanie and Melinda, um, hours and hours of work, um, leading this, um, uh, reaccreditation over the past couple of years from organizing professional development, creating subcommittee logistics of the visit, um, helping the leadership team with all the reports. So she has poured a lot of effort and time, um, into this. And, um, I just wanted to thank you Stephanie and Melinda as well. Um, they did a great job of leading that building through this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie, she's going to talk a little bit about the report, some of its findings and sort of where we go from there.
Thank you.
Brenda and Owen are calling up my PowerPoint, all right, I think as we speak, and we'll share it on Zoom for those watching at home as well. Um, but I'm excited to be here tonight, as Robert said, this has been years and hours in the making. Um, this is quite a process that, um, our high school has gone through. Um, so thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk about it. Um, so the N E S, um, organization partners with schools, um, all over the country to really provide accreditation, but to look at best practices and really think about, um, meaningful, ongoing, um, improvements and initiatives, whole school initiatives that schools, um, kind of should be thinking about and working on. So through this process, there's five specific standards that, um, really govern this, this whole process. And those are the learning culture, student learning, professional practices, learning support and learning resources. Even just from the five standards that I mentioned, and you'll notice that four of those standards all have the word learning. So really is a priority for, um, our N E S review. So just to kind of mention the timelines of, um, the review process. So this really started several years ago, I think, um, Mr. Parga asked Melinda and I to be the co-chairs. Like two thousand and sixteen, knowing that this was coming, um, N E S really has changed their process. It's always been a ten year, um, visit, um, from your last visit, but their process now is more cyclical where there are, um, points during that ten years that, um, the school really has to, um, have some initiatives there. So when, um, Mr. Parga asked Melinda and I to kind of take this on, we did some P V work with N E S to really start to focus on what that looked like. Our kickoff was in January of two thousand and eighteen, where a woman from N E S actually came out and, and kind of kicked off the whole process to our, our staff. So in the winter and spring of two thousand and eighteen, I actually found this to be probably the best part of the whole process, but it was our high school self-reflection. And it was a great opportunity for our staff and our teachers to work together to really, um, do that, just, just that, a self-reflection on the things that we are doing here at our school, the areas that we feel like need some improvement and, um, some, and some areas that we needed to focus on. What are the good things we're doing here at school as well? And it was a really great, um, I think we had maybe three P V, um, times in that spring where, um, you know, our whole staff was involved and we had a lot of great conversations through that. Um, from that time after that, we created what was called our school growth plan. And from there, we identified areas that we wanted to work on prior to our decennial visit. N E S now has what's called a collaborative conference, so.
Actually, Stephanie, I'm sorry, are we good? Do you want a, a second to just kind of get that up? Because I want to make sure that everybody, oh no, you're great. But I want to make sure that if we're, uh, trying to zoom this out, that they're also getting that presentation.
Oh, it's on the Zoom.
Are we good?
Yeah, on the Zoom.
Stephanie, you were great, I'm sorry to ruin your rhythm, I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, it's fine. Um, and I did go, and so if you have a question, please, please feel free to stop me.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so in October of two thousand and eighteen, we hosted our collaborative conference. And this is a smaller version of the big visit where we had, um, I think four educators in the state of Massachusetts, or actually in Wingland, come to visit our school. Um, it was a great conference, they were here for three days. They saw our, our growth plan and the work that we had identified as areas of need. Um, and just, it, it was a smaller version of what we knew that the decennial visit was going to look like. Following the collaborative, um, conference is when we really started to put in place the areas in our growth plan, um, focus on our areas of need and what we wanted to do prior to our visit. And then the pandemic happened, so that kind of put a halt in our, our work for a little bit. Um, our original date for our decennial visit was in October of two thousand and twenty, um, which was canceled. And we had to pivot into a virtual, um, visit in March of two thousand and twenty one. So just to touch base on what our, um, priority areas and our growth plan, the things that came out of our, um, self-study. The three areas that of the school we really felt were important to address were our student transitions to Medfield High School, um, our mission statement and vision of the graduate and our, um, ranked curriculum across all departments. So we looked at, um, kind of had action steps under each category where we really wanted to, um, take a look at, you know, for our student transitions, not just our transition from Blake to the high school, although we felt like that's a really important one to talk about, but also our transition for all of our new students enrolling in Medfield High School and especially our E L population. Really starting to think about what we could put into place to address, um, the need there. So for example, one of the things we've done for the past several years was our high school guidance counselors go to Blake Middle School in May or June of the eighth grade year and meet all of our freshmen before they even walk into the doors of Medfield High School. Um, I think it's been great to have the opportunity to, um, meet with all of our students and talk to them a little bit about what the transition is going to look like, what they can expect, who we are, so they have a face to go with a name. Um, I think it's alleviated some of the concern of, you know, if they have a question, like not knowing who to reach out to because they've already had an opportunity to meet us. That's been one thing that I think, um, obviously that has impacted my department, but we all really, really love doing that. So, um, some of the things that we've really talked about again, um, our new students, you know, we're really trying to talk to our students that, um, enroll in Medfield High School and think about ways that we can help them better transition to our school. Um, find different supports for our E L population. Um, one thing we keep talking about and has kind of come out of the study was creating an area on our website for new families. Um, really to help them better understand what our school, um, is like here at Medfield High School.
Stephanie, I'm going to quickly ask you to define for everybody what E L is.
Sure, that is our, um, English language learners. So our students that have, um, English learning during the day as well, and so maybe English is their first language. Thank you. Um, so one of the other areas that N E S really focuses on is our mission statement and our vision of the graduate. And this was interesting because we've had, the mission statement's always a big part of the N E S accreditation, but I don't think we had really as a faculty sat down and really talked about what our mission was and what our goals are for our graduates. We've had great conversations to really think about what we want our students to leave here with. You know, yes, we want them to be lifelong learners and involved in the community and, um, you know, invested in their education, but we also want them to be resilient. We also want them to, um, be resourceful. And, um, we had great conversations around what those two, um, kind of statements are for our school and the importance of making sure students know what our vision is. So that way they're involved in these, these conversations as well. Because we can have a vision for you, but if you don't share that vision, you know, we might not kind of be going on the same path. So we've had some great conversations with students and, and faculty there as well. Um, and the one area that is definitely an area that we need to focus on is having written curriculum that is of similar template and kind of easy to find across all departments. So that's something, you know, we started, um, with realigning our report card comments with our vision of the graduate. If you have a high school student here, you may notice that some of our report card com- comments might not just say pleasure to have in class, but really thinking about things like time management and how the student advocates for themselves. And, um, you know, just, just trying to align more with some of the work we're doing, um, with our students. So as I said, we had to change our, our whole visit from an in-person, um, visit to all virtual, which was very different. Um, but I really think that we, I think we did a pretty good job with it. I think the team that, that virtually came to our school, we had a lot of resources and, um, materials that they could access easily. Melinda and I made a website for our visiting team where everything they needed, from the schedule to student work, to, um, our, our growth plan, everything we've done for N E S is basically on this website for the team. So we had, um, Chris Bous and students create a virtual tour of our school, um, a video tour that our team was able to watch. Our team met with our steering committee, our school committee, central office. Um, the classroom co- observations were different, but last year was different. So, um, I, I'm not sure the visiting team got the exact same effect that it would if they have been here in person. But I think still, you know, to be able to jump into a Zoom, hear what, you know, the teacher was putting out for, for students, see how the remote learning was going in such, um, you know, an untraditional year. Um, I, I think they got the most out of it that they could. Would I rather them here in person totally, but, um, I, I think the, the classroom observations virtually, they were okay. Um, our student meetings were great, our students love to talk about Medfield High School, whether it's challenges. Challenges or N E S or, um, I don't know, any other thing that like I bring students to, they love talking about our school. So our students did a great job, um, they, the. They, the visiting team, we had meetings set up with all of our kind of committees that addressed the priority areas that I mentioned. So we had our our subcommittee that works with the eighth to ninth grade transition. They met with them. We had another subcommittee that focused on new students and EL populations transitioning to Medfield High School, our mission statement and vision of the graduate committee, and our curriculum committee. Also, our HVAC committee, I think, Michael, you were there and Jeff was there and a couple of teachers that were on that substandard as well. So so from our visit, you know, Robert got a report back with our commendations and and congratulating congratulating us for awarding us our accreditation. So I'd just like to kind of quickly go through kind of what the commendations were and some of the highlights of what the visiting committee was really impressed with. So I think first, the the first thing they wrote about was, you know, our our school-wide habits, skills and mindsets, mindset, especially around social emotional learning. Even at our collaborative conference in 2018, the committee that was here really was kind of wowed and impressed by our advisory model, our RISE program, the support of the guidance staff, and just really couldn't say enough about how much our school really supported the social emotional well-being of our students. So I thought that was wonderful. They talked a lot about the strong relationships that are forged between faculty members and students. And I think as, you know, Bernard and Robert were talking about our new advisory system, although a little bit different, but I think the the same goal is still there to create those relationships. Obviously, during the pandemic, one of the highlights was our nursing staff and our services that we were offering. Our our visiting team that when they talk with our nurses and, you know, so many people had wonderful things to say about the work they were doing during the pandemic, and that really, that really came out in our report. Our visiting team was very impressed with the central office support around PD time, especially with the work that around curriculum development. Our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I know some of this work kind of is just getting started, but they were really impressed that we were all talking about it and focusing on that that was an area of need. Our technology resources came out as as a high, a positive as well, again, especially during the pandemic, when so much of the work we were doing was remote and needed the infrastructure and software and and support of our technology department. One of the things from our collaborative conference in 2018, you know, we had really started to talk about our new schedule. So that was in all of our reports prior to our visit. So our visiting team was thrilled that we were implementing this new schedule in September, because the two things, to allow students to have time to access their teachers during the day, flex period we now have, and then to provide our teachers common planning time, like official common planning time, which our teachers now have after school several times a week. So they love the idea of our new schedule. The central office and school committee's support and knowledge and commitment to our school district definitely came out came out in our support. And they were very impressed by our community and the district's dependability for funding and implementing different programs and services that we felt like our our student population needed. The last two things that were in the report, the work that we are starting to do around inequities and implicit bias work and the work that our Merge, our Medfield Educator for Racial Justice, the work that we're doing there. So those were some of the highlights that they pulled out from their visit to us, where then they, yay, congratulations, you are accredited for the next 10 years. So with that, though, our one area of priority growth, when you look at, you can see on the PowerPoint, there's the five standards that I mentioned, and there's actually six foundational elements, excuse me. So we got checkmarks on everything except for the area of written curriculum. So this says, there is a written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses and all departments across the school. And we knew this coming into the visit, that this was an area that we need to focus on. We've known this since our self-study and our collaborative conference. And, you know, we had a lot of plans to work on this last year, but because so much of our PD was around remote learning and all of that, which is is totally understandable and and our NEAS friends totally understand that as well. But this is definitely a priority for us moving forward over the next couple of years. So again, as I said, the, because the NEAS process now is cyclical, we'll have a first-year report of progress and planning due to NEAS in May of this year, then a three-year report following that. Then around the five-year mark, we'll probably start doing our work for our self-study again. Then an eight-year mark, our collaborative conference, and then in 10 years, we'll do this all over again. So, but it's great. As I said earlier, I think the self-study was actually the best part of the whole process. So and I think we got so much buy-in and feedback from our faculty who really felt invested by this. I think because NEAS doesn't now just come every 10 years because you're working on it and because we're identifying the areas of need, it makes people kind of want to keep talking about it and be involved in the process. So I think the discipline swimmingly as well as it could have. And does anybody have any questions that I can answer about the topic?
I would just add that I I did see a couple of members of the visiting team over the summer at different events, and they both highlighted, we wish you could have been in Medfield in person to see, because what, they loved what they saw over video, but they wish they had seen it in person. So they're very complimentary of what was going on in the classrooms. And I just, you know, I can't thank you guys enough for all the work. There's so much work that goes into this, and I know that with a lot on all of you, and it came out great. So appreciate everything.
So you have, I hate to focus on the the one deficit, but it's also an incredibly important part of our our learning for our kids. What is your kind of initial plan around really starting this work again? You know, obviously, you had expected to do it before. What are your kind of benchmarks? What are you looking at over the next year even? What do you think you'll be saying at that May report that will give a structure to that discussion?
Well, we started this conversation with Christine Power, I think, the minute she was hired in the district, you know. So we've been talking at our department chair meetings and leadership meetings about this for quite some time. If you ask any of the department chairs where their written curriculum is or what it looks like, they could find it for you quickly, and they would be able to tell you, you know, biology is this, and in English, can we do this? But it's to try to figure out the best way to have one format streamline the process. So if we had a new teacher starting, you know, Mr. Parga could say, here's the curriculum for this course, and it's 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 all right there. I know that, so there will be two new people helping out with the first-year report. Not that Melinda and I have stepped down, but they thought, you know, to get more people involved in the process. So Madeline Chamberlain and Ashley Rendy are going to be working on this first-year report with Robert and Brenna and Heather. And I imagine that there's going to be hopefully dedicated time to PD work around really kind of figuring this out and finalizing it. I think the the work that's going to need to be done is figuring out what the best kind of model or template looks like kind of for all departments, because that's what they're looking for, you know. So I I think, but again, if we start having these great conversations as a staff, as a whole staff, you know, it's only going to kind of move us to the next level.
I can just add to the the self-study, because that was the big change in their process. If you followed NEAS, they really did a re, they really reorganized how they do these visits a few years ago. And having gone through self-study over the old model, it was very prescriptive and didn't always sort of hit the school where they needed to really focus on. So the beauty in the self-study is that we were actually able to identify this in advance. And when we wrote up our report, we we identified the fact that we do need this, this curriculum piece documented in a way that sort of formalizes it, but also makes it consistent as well. So I think that there's so much value in being reflective and and doing a self-study. And, you know, Stephanie highlighted, and I'll echo this, the the best part of the whole process is that the staff, we were able to identify these things, even, you know, sort of take a look at ourselves. You know, from a distance, we love the work that we're doing, our kids do great, but there's always, you know, room for improvement and for us to be able to identify that and then how NEAS come in to say, yeah, you're right, that is an area that needs to shore up some was 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 good. So and I think it, you know, from a teaching standpoint, they felt as if, you know, certainly the the work that we had been doing really coincided with with this recommendation. So it tied together nicely, it just wasn't something that was dropped on us from the outside that might not have, you know, you know, felt like it was for us, that was something that was.
And how does this mesh together with the curriculum work that Dr. Power's been doing from elementary and then kind of as we look at that kind of vertical learning around this? Will there be standardized, essentially kind of grade level appropriate, age appropriate, standardized kind of templates across?
Yes.
The whole, that's all I need to know. Yes.
Yes.
So it makes things easier as as you go on and easier for parents to understand what the check area is and for kids to understand what their check is. Is there comment here? Double thumbs up.
As it's going through, it's a daunting process, the whole thing. So I spend you all particularly during the pandemic.
Very much so.
And the curriculum work side has been a focus, so I appreciate the district's, you know, approach on that. So and.
And definitely, Stephanie and Melinda, I know I've said this before, but they actually went out as a team to visit another school as a as part of the NEAS process. So they got to see the other side of it in advance of the work that NEAS did with us. So, you know, they had a big family from, you know, their families and school for a little bit to do with it. Again, they really jumped in into this process and they were they were.
I know, it's very important to get out of the box and see what others are doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. I will take public input now on this specific topic, both the reopening for the high school as well as for the NEAS process. All comments will be hopefully done in three minutes or less. Does anybody have any public comment on either the high school reopening or the NEAS process at this point? Okay, then, Dr. Marston, are there any other items since those things?
At this time, manager.
All right. So now we are going to move on to old business, which is something that I think that we really wanted to complete. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Take care. And we are looking at the policy recommendations in the policy project. This is will be our second reading for several, or actually all of these. These are in section J. And we do expect to vote several of the recommendations in tonight. So Megan or Tim, do you want to speak to any of the recommendations that you made? I know that there are two that we feel like we don't need to continue to have in the manual, because they simply do not apply to our school district. Do you want to correct? Talk about this.
Do you need me to make a motion to dismiss those?
If, you don't have to dismiss them. What I would probably do is make a motion to strike from the manual letter JC, which is attendance areas, and JC A, which is. Do you have that on your right now, DC? I believe I do.
Assignment of students to schools.
Assignment of students to schools.
And both, both of these policies are specific to schools that are neighborhood schools, which is not a system that we use in Medfield, so.
And it talks a lot about switching students should they need to between schools, but since we all progress along at the same grade level. If, I I mean, my my personal feeling has been that if we ever do need these policies, then we are having much bigger dangers in our district, and we should probably write at that time, policy, that best fits us as opposed to kind of this, you know, one size fits all or two sizes fit all, correct policy. So do I hear a second on the motion to strike from the manual with JC attendance areas and student attendance policy?
A second.
Ten seconds. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the motion passes.
And then the second point before we vote on the second reading is to perhaps hold off on JFABC, which is.
This is students attending the Medfield Public Schools admission of transfer students, which, do you want to talk about my extensive rewrite? Which is not actually, and I'll actually send that to the committee right now.
In in reviewing our current policy, it was discovered that we don't really talk at all about someone who is potentially signing a lease to come move to Medfield. So that should be maybe added, and there was enough I change that I know that you needed a a second reading on that before we could could vote on that.
Yeah, absolutely. One of the other things that, as I was looking at it, I I just wanted to make sure that we were being very clear. We do, as a district, Dr. Marston, kind of had this policy that that as people sign purchase and sales, or as they know that they are very much efficient moving into the district, that we think it's important for kids to transfer in and be able to have kind of that softer landing. But we never had anything about about leases, and we've also, there are kind of some little tweaks here in terms of like, you know, that you have to intend to live in that residence, because at times there have been people who have rented rooms here and then wanted to send their kids, thinking that that would be, okay, it's very rare, but my goodness gracious. It happens, it has happened. And that we wanted to make sure that, you know, not every child has parents who continue to be married or continue to live together. We do need to make sure that the custodial parent is the parent that gets to send, or lives in town, to send their children here, or that that is part of their kind of agreement. So it's just really kind of pinning down those very specific things that could make transferring that much more difficult if we don't have those things. So I actually just sent that to all of you. Andrea, can you put that in the, I sent that to you as well, you can put it in the minutes for tonight. And then we will look at that and vote on that on November 18th. All right, and then there was one that, there were two that we needed to strike and combine. Do you remember? That is, you may, you may.
Yes, I did, it's the tobacco.
Yes. So we used to have two separate policies, one for tobacco and one for alcohol use.
So JICG.
Mm-hmm, which is tobacco used by students.
Right, and JICH.
Just alcohol.
Right, so we would be basically lifting the MASC policy, JICH, which combines the two.
Right, so we would be striking JICG and the current version of JICH to be replaced with JICH alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. One question I do have is that the mask language reads "subject to disciplinary action." But when we were looking at the policies themselves, Jeff had a preference to, as outlined in the student handbook, which he thought was more precise.
Yeah, correct, and that's what I noted in.
Are we generally good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Megan, do you want to make a motion? I can say the motion and you can say that you're making that motion.
Let me do that.
All right. Do I hear a motion to strike policy JICG tobacco used by students and JICH alcohol used by students? All right. Um, do I hear a motion to strike policy J I C G tobacco used by students and J I C H alcohol used by students? To be replaced with the M A S C version of J I C H alcohol, tobacco and drug use by students prohibited. Do you hear a motion? Megan moves. Wait, you're a second.
A second tonight.
Okay. So ten seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Um, the next one, I'll do the, this slight tweak ones and then I'll do the replacing one to one votes. Uh, J H D exclusions and exemptions for school attendance. In the current policy, there is a phrase that no longer tracks with, uh, the regulations that, uh, for M A S C. So we want to remove the phrase, having been expelled during the same year from this district or any district in the Commonwealth. Which brings the policy up to date with regulation thirty-seven and three quarters. Do I hear a motion to, uh, amend policy J H D exclusions and exemptions from school attendance? By striking the phrase, having been expelled during the same year from this district or any district in the Commonwealth. Megan, so moves. Wait a second.
A second tonight.
Okay, tonight. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Um, then the next, uh, policies are very specifically kind of one to one. Um, replacements that have tweaks around, uh, M A S C language as opposed to our kind of policies that have not been moved in quite enough. Or, um, so the first one is, and I'll do this as a, do we agree that it would be all right for us to do these as one vote?
Yep.
Okay, the committee agrees? Okay. So, uh, replace, uh. Policy JB educational, I'm sorry, equal educational opportunities, JBB educational equity, JF school admissions. Including additional cross references as noted, JIE pregnant students, JIC student discipline. And J I C F A dash E easing. Do I hear a motion to replace those, uh, with the M A S C language as proposed in our reading? So, so moved. Megan Glenn moves. And do I have a second?
A ten minute second.
Tim, all right. You guys are my dream team. And we have our second tranche. Um, and then do I have, uh? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Aye. And the motion passes unanimously. We are also along with, um. Along with the, uh, new transfer student policy that I, uh, kind of wrote or rewrote. Um, we are also going to postpone the J J E co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Um, it was reviewed in twenty eighteen. Um, Megan and I had a, a conversation about kind of operationally, how we put that into place. And it is also largely tracking with the Department of Education. Um, and there's probably some indication that the Department of Education will re-write that. So, um. We would essentially be voting something again that's already there to then re-vote it and reread it again in probably a fairly short period of time within a year or so. So. Um, but I think that we can have a, a good conversation about how we operationalize some of the parts in there in terms of putting it into our, um. Our top calendar for the year in terms of budget reports.
So, and I, I just asked, that's like, what is highlighted in that, like, section three and five?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems like it'd be worthwhile.
So do we need a motion to?
Nope. We don't need a motion to do anything. It just, uh, we just postponed it. And as long as the committee agrees to postpone it, we're postponing it. Um, and, uh, do I have any public comment around any of the policies that we just did? Okay. And I am going to, uh, move on to the, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed Mask Mandate Update. Um, and if Dr. Marsman would like to.
Sure. Sure. So in your packet, any materials, you have the press release from, uh, last Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. In which the Commission of Education extended the mask requirement for all K to twelve public schools through at least, uh, January fifteenth. Um, I was on a group of, uh, on a zoom with him with a group of about five or six, uh, superintendents when he was talking to us about this. Um, you know, part of his concern revolves around the vaccine for five to eleven year olds and making sure that there's some time for that to, to take place before we start, um, removing the mask in our schools. So as part of that, and, and, and you know, even, even as early as September, um, there was an off-ramping, uh, procedure that Desi put together. Which essentially allows a district by school, that if you have at least eighty percent of your staff and students, um, fully vaccinated. That you can apply for a waiver and you can make a decision anytime after you get that waiver, uh, to remove masks for that school only. So it's not something that the district does as a whole. It's really just focusing, and I think, which I think we would focus if we did this, the high school. I mean, I think that's what we would look. Um, so I also put in materials, the information around that and also the attestation form, uh, that you submit to Desi to do this. So we are at, uh, we, we've been above eighty percent at the high school. Um, you know, we've been following the local metrics really closely as far as, um, our pool testing. Um, so we haven't had a positive case at the high school in eleven days at this point. Um, and, and we, uh, we've had a couple of rounds of pool testing with no positive pools coming out of the high school. Or in fact, any of our schools in the last two weeks. Um, so the trend is definitely going in the direction that we'd like to see it. Um, so I would just like to have a conversation whether or not you think it's appropriate for me to apply for that waiver on the, for the high school on behalf of the district. And get that information, get that blessing, so to speak, from Desi. And then we follow what we think is important as far as meeting with the Board of Health and following local data, establishing some metrics that we would do use in the district to. Say when masks would come off, what, what would have to happen for that to, for masks to come off and really just kind of put us in a place where we could be nimble if we need to do that. As opposed to going through all of that and then waiting for another meeting and then allowing me to do that. And then we're waiting two or three weeks and we could be in a situation where masks come off or not. Just, just kind of having that conversation. So I'd like to just kind of put that to you folks to see what you think. And it doesn't say we're going to do it, but it gives us the ability if, you know, if we want to move in that direction.
I'll take a first stab at that if that's right. So, um, you know, so I know there was a handful of districts that jumped in right on that and just to get that option as well. You know, I think it's something that we should have control over, uh, you know, as we have control over our destiny. It's one thing that I learned.
Do you think that the waiver gives you control over your destiny?
It is our, our own destiny here, right? So I think the, you know, the one thing not to. You know, not to poo poo on the, uh, the D's, but, um, you know, they've had to, you know, they, at the beginning of the pandemic, they did a lot of catch up to get in place for us, right? And so I think this is something that they're giving us, uh, the ability to, to use locally. Uh, and I think that's a, a great way to do that. So I don't think it hurts for us to apply for that and, you know, work with our local folks that we've already established a rapport with. Um, the numbers that the community is maintaining as far as, uh, safety and vaccination. Uh, I was gonna, I was curious, is, do we have a vaccination, current vaccination rate at the middle school?
We do. It's not as high as the high school. I think it's eighty, forty-five percent. Uh, high school was, yeah, high school was plus ninety-five.
Is it because of so many six fitters that are over twelve?
Yeah. 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 I think, so I think that's, it typically what we've seen statewide, that's been the trend that high schools are much higher than middle schools.
Sure.
You know, that's what we've seen. I think it's, you know, it allows us to at least start those conversations with folks and kind of see where people are at as far as removing the mask. It allows us to, to at least get the blessing from the state. Not saying that we're going to do it the next day. Uh, but, you know, one of the things that I'm really curious to see, number one is making sure that our pool testing stays where it's at. Um, the second piece is, is whether or not MIAA is going to recommend, which I've heard rumors, that they're going to recommend that, um, no mask wearing during athletic events in the winter. So if you think back to last year, um, our friends that play hockey was, was a large amount of, of positives, at least in this area, not just Medfield, but this area. So that was, you know, that was an issue. And then, you know, inside basketball was an issue as well for us. So it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out. So I think we need to kind of see that, how that plays out with MIAA, whether they're going to remove those. But the last time I was, uh, would probably two weeks ago at a meeting over there, they, that's what they were talking about doing. But they haven't had that clearance from the state medical on that yet. So there's, I mean, it's trending in that direction of removing masks. We know that. So that as long as numbers stay where they are. Uh, but there's just a lot of factors. I think we, we've had conversations individually. I have individual members here about how important it is to get our younger kids vaccinated. Because in Medfield, there are so many families that have multiple children at multiple grade levels. Uh, we want to make sure that folks are safe or at least have the opportunity to get the vaccination. So, um, Kathy Thompson, our nurse leader, who's been outstanding, has, um, worked with a local pharmacy. And we'll be able to host a vaccination clinic for, uh, the five to eleven year old students, um, at one of our schools in the next week or two. So we're kind of waiting for that final okay from, um, from everyone and, uh, make sure we have enough vaccinations at, at that particular pharmacy. But that looks good to be able to bring it right here for us so that our families can just go after school at a certain time, whether we do it one or two dates, we're not sure yet. Uh, but we want to make sure we offer that service so that we'll be able to do that and, and get, you know, as close and back to normal as we can. That, that's what our goal has always been. But I think it's important in the next couple of weeks to really try to get some of those metrics that we think are important for us to look at. Uh, before, you know, you folks make a decision and, and make an informed decision on, on that, uh, master move.
In general, I mean, um, in general, I'm, I'm very much in favor of applying for a waiver and I'm ready. Um, I do think that some of the metrics I would like to see are some of the things that we may actually need to, uh. Institute beforehand, which is that, you know, at the high school, I know that pool testing has seemed somewhat optional because so many kids. Um, even if you're signed up for it, so many kids are like, but I'm vaccinated. So why do I have to do this? And I would think that there would be a certain percentage of people who should sign up. And I don't know what that is.
Mm-hmm.
But I would like to see almost universal pool testing, if that is possible, simply because that is the first place that we can find. To, to know if, if, uh, things are starting to go out of control or if we're getting breakthrough. And I also think that we are, and we've talked about this before, we're heading into the travel season and into the season where everybody is all of a sudden going to be able to see their families for the first time in very long time. I think that may be what, uh, Desi had in mind when they were extending it through January fifteenth, because we know it's that.
It was actually that piece and the vaccination were really key. Thanks. And I think.
And that's the other part that's been so important to me. And we've talked about this is that I. Um, if a family does not have a choice about whether they can vaccinate the younger child or not, then I'm not sure how I will. Be able to say, you know, well, we're just going to take off masks anyway. And you have to wear a mask at school and you have to wear one at home just in case infected younger citizens. And I, I feel like that's been a really untenable situation. However, if now that younger children will have the choice and there is a level that will have been able to get both. Um, both doses and that they have that, that right and that ability to do so, that I feel much more comfortable. That's, um, the kids are, and that families have that choice.
Hmm.
So I think that there's, you know, kind of a, a part around that, around there's going to be a little bit of time that we need to wait. But we, we do have the waiver, but let's make sure that people have the ability to get the vaccine for their younger children. That's my thought. If they choose, and if they don't choose, well then, that's, you know, that's their choice. But I would like to see, make sure that we do have that second part in place too, which is the, we have great, good testing numbers at our elementary schools and our middle school. At the high school, it's, you know, not been as great, still pretty good, but it's not great.
Yeah, it was strong last year before the vaccination.
Right.
Certainly we had.
So I want to make sure that's not a part that just gets.
Our numbers were off the charts last year. So.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the waiver is a good, good idea just to give us that flexibility. But I do feel strongly about having the guidance of the medical professionals and, um, Board of Health. So to be part of the conversation when we establish our benchmarks, sort of, they're very clear and the community knows, you know?
And now that, actually, just, uh. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Marsman, but, uh, the BO, now that there is not, uh, a public emergency declared by the state. But the Board of Health is in much more of an advisory role, and I would very much appreciate their advice. But they are not able to simply say, you know, shut schools or don't shut schools or, you know, that's never been their actual, um. Ability. They've always been able to shut, if, if there was a public health emergency called.
Right.
They could shut down schools, but they cannot, uh, advise, do anything more than advise us around the medical. Part of this. You know, there's always that operational part.
Yeah. Advice. None of us are physicians. None of us are scientists. So.
And I think, you know, in terms of our Board of Health, the fact that, and again, I talked to superintendents all over the state and the fact that we have a Board of Health that has. Folks that are medical professionals, public health professionals, I mean, we, we certainly have an advantage over other communities. So I think it's, it's really important for us to use that and get their advice and kind of what they're thinking, because there are others, you know, other communities that they just don't have that expertise on their board of health. So I think we're fortunate in that regard. So.
Me so too. And that wasn't, uh, my statement wasn't so much a ding. I just wanted to make sure that we were all kind of understanding what the difference is between a public health emergency as declared and kind of normal, normal times.
I think it's important that we actually do do the waiver, um, because it is what it is. But we have the vaccination rate. Um, and this is a piece in the process to get us to where we want to be, which is eventually maskless. What I don't want to happen is the masks come off, the masks go back on, the masks come off, the masks go back on. I want to do it once. And I want to do it right. And, and in some ways, we're kind of looking at our friends, uh, in the neighborhood that are. I mean, they're doing it three weeks off, three weeks off. I.
Right.
You know, and the fact that they are all divided and they couldn't agree. I don't want that to be us.
So there were nine schools in the state that originally had applied and, and got the waivers. And, and you think about nine schools, not nine districts, nine schools. You think of the hundreds of school, thousands of schools in the state. Um, so I think what we, our recommendation to the commissioner, uh, two weeks ago, we met with him was let's use the, the nine or so that want to go forward with this and kind of study them as a pilot and see what happens, right? I mean, seriously.
You guys go ahead.
Yeah, you got, I mean, really, right? If you, if you're so inclined, then do it. And then we'll see what happens after three weeks and make some decisions based on that. Because some of them are very, are very like communities to us, you know? So I think we want to just kind of see what that, how that goes. And, you know, I think the example that we're talking about, Hawkington, I think they, they did the three weeks with masks off, which started today. And then they're going to put them back on after Thanksgiving because of what happened to them last year. That was, they had a huge spike after Thanksgiving and hopping in last year. And I think that's what they're thinking, which, you know, makes sense for them. But let's see how it goes with them in the next three weeks.
Testing during this?
I'm not sure if there are or not.
Cause another idea, I mean, I know we're going to talk more about this, but, you know, when we eventually. Take off the masks, if there can be a period of time at least, I'm not saying, I know you want it the whole year, but if we could say for the next, you know, three weeks, four weeks.
Yeah.
We're doing mandated full testing till we see a trend.
Yeah, we don't. Or that we bump up full testing after those kind of, um, touch points that we know we had last year and that everybody in the state.
Right.
Does too. You know, it's the, it's the two week cycle after February vacation is the two week cycle after, um, you know, winter break. It's the two week cycle after April, right? Like, are there times that we need to be more vigilant seeing what, you know, April seems too far away to even think about. But, you know, are there times that we need to be more hyper vigilant than we were previously? And that doesn't mean masks back on, but it does mean a, a level of expectation that, that pool testing and, you know, that we'll be doing.
Well, and it, it's hard to set these metrics as everything evolves so fast to, um, so it's obviously, and what you're saying is staying in. Touch with the medical professionals and the other superintendents.
And I don't think it would be, yeah. I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to also, you know, at the very beginning of the school year, we put out. Uh, you know, kind of essentially a kind of public email about like, where are you on this? You know, we need to have the buy-in and maybe in a couple of weeks or several weeks about like, okay. okay, population wise, where are you on this? What do you need to know to make sure that you feel okay about sending your child to school? What are the barriers right now to you vaccinating or participating in pool testing? What are what are the ways that we can help you?
That's a good thought exchange, actually.
Yeah.
Because it's it's pretty wide open, let people kind of give their responses and because I don't know if I wanna do a, are you in favor of yes or no?
And that wasn't actually what I said. It's really about thoughts, because we need to, we need to read the room.
Yeah.
But you know, the if the the language is clear too, that if you're not vaccinated, you still have to wear a mask.
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, what are we gonna do? The enforcement, the, you know, uh I hate to say that's kind of like that scarlet level thing.
I mean, fortunately for us.
Our kids are more understanding than our parents worry about them being, but yeah.
But I think that's a larger issue in other parts of the state, not here. I mean, we have, like I said, we're ninety-five plus at the high school. So, you know, you'd you'd have a very small number of, if any, by the time it would do this, you know, so I think we're, you know, we're in really good shape with that.
That'd be my hope anyway.
Yeah, but I think there's lots of conversations to be had in the next few weeks. I know certainly talking with teachers and staff and those kinds of, you know, conversations we need to have and but uh if you allow me, I will um, you know, get right on it this week. I will send out the waiver into the state and just kind of go from there. It's a quick turnaround, a couple of business days. So if I were to do it tomorrow, Wednesday, we'd get it by the weekend or or by next week, so.
Yeah. Feel confident in making a a motion. This is not necessarily something that Dr. Marston needs to vote from us, but I think certainly uh in terms of support and knowing that we're somewhat aligned in this. Do I hear a motion? So Leo moves that uh please support Dr. Marston in applying for the waiver. Do I hear a second? Anime second? Okay, all in support? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Motion passes and.
No, it's just.
And then I wanna open it to public comment.
It may come up for future gen items, but it would probably make sense to try to invite it. We had somebody from Board of Health on either eleven eighteen first in December, to keep the conversation moving on and.
See where we can.
Maybe the week after Thanksgiving.
Let's see how that, um, yeah, so, okay. Uh, do I have public comments? If you'd like to come up and simply, um, all you have to do is introduce yourself, give us your address, and then three minutes.
My name is Flavia De Sullivan, and I'm a resident here at Metfield for sixteen years. I have three kids in the Metfield school system, Dale Blake in the high school. Um, and this is actually my first time attending a school committee, and I came tonight to talk about the mask mandate, and I was waiting for this session, not as a parent, but as a professional. I've been attorney for the past seventeen years. I'm also a certified healthcare environmental services professional. I've been working in regulatory compliance at at the EPA, FDA, OSHA, and risk assessment and infection prevention for the past six years. The focus of what I do has primarily been in the healthcare space. But following so much misinformation from the media, governmental bodies, all that, et cetera, this pandemic, um, the need for environmental infection prevention experts have really kind of uh breached, you know, broadened so uh in pretty much every sector outside of healthcare. Uh so I'm here today to speak as an expert in my field. So for you to understand what it is that is that we do as environmental infection prevention experts, we consult um and provide holistic, full infection prevention solutions for, and initially started in healthcare, but now we do it throughout the country and through other different sectors. So what we do is look into um what are your protocols, what are your processes, what are your products, what's your equipment, what's your indoor air quality? We assess your environmental hazards and pathogens, biological assessment and testing. And then we look at everything and put a process together for you. So it's everything from disinfectants to your indoor air quality, to your HVAC, um, to um your PPE. Everything we're looking at to make sure you're really ensuring proper infection prevention on a a really, not on a corrective measure, but you wanna make sure that you're being um, uh, you know, getting ahead of it. Um, so the reason I wanted to come here and talk about the mask policy is because there's been so much misinformation from the CDC, from regulatory um guidelines, from OSHA, from UNEMAN, even from our Board of Health, from our state, everything. So just to give you an example, recap of twenty twenty, you know, no one should wear masks, only healthcare workers should wear masks. Everyone should bear masks, but you type only N ninety-fives for healthcare workers. Vaccinated people don't need masks, vaccinated people need to use masks indoors. All students and teachers should wear masks in school. So let's talk a little bit about SARS-CoV- two.
One more minute. I'll be a sir.
We've, no, I'm gonna finish my statement, I'm sorry. We've all learned that it effectively spreads in the air. We know that. Um, we also live in this very, very tiny, zero point one micron size. So what does that mean for the purposes of masks? That means that if in terms of particular matter, they are able, those are able to get into nooks and crannies um if you're not wearing a properly fitted mask. And I hate to put you on the spot, Dr. Marston, but you've been the worst offender today. Every time you talk, your mask goes down. So it's really not effective in preventing what we think we're preventing in terms of really having a a buttoned up protocol. And my point there is not that masks don't work. On the contrary, they do. But it has to be like an N ninety-five, something that's properly fitted for your face, something that really is doing what it's supposed to do. So that there's a a couple of studies that I'm gonna share with you really quick. The CDC actually published this on their um on their website. Um, and it's a study on effectiveness effectiveness of cloth masks for protection against severe acute respiratory syndrome. Essentially, what they say is that um cloth masks may provide some protection if well designed and used correctly.
Thank you, Flavia.
Just by looking at all of you here, I know that those cloth masks are not properly fitted and they're not really the way.
Thank you, Flavia. That is.
Not done yet.
No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, we're not talking about masks and we're not sharing opinions and we're not doing back and forth.
Just talking about masks.
No, I'm sorry. What I'm telling you. Owen, can you stop the zone for just a moment? All right, actually, Flavia, are you done with your statement?
I was not done yet.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna uh stop because the, at this point, the chair has said it's three minutes. If we don't give everybody actual actual time.
Can I, can I give her my three minutes, please?
Uh, no, you may not. If you'd like to come up and give a three minute public statement. There's no reason that this has to be confrontational, but we do wanna give everybody three minutes.
Okay.
Right? Okay, Owen, you can turn it back on now because we've got a second. All right, would you like to state your name and please pull your mask up? Would you like to state your name and your address?
On, again, Helen, I'm gonna finish reading what she was not able to. A mask mandate that fails the address, the actual effectiveness of what the mandate is supposed to accomplish is another example of the hygiene theater that we are seeing around the country in every industry. As an example, applying disinfectants for the sake of applying disinfect disinfectants without concern for safety of the products used by the workers, passive exposure, or even properly achieving the needed dwell time. An ineffective mask mandate is a theatrical production of the biggest proportion. This is why you have study after study that shows no change in effective rates of masks versus unmasked in community settings. If the intent is to ensure that masks are blocking aerosols, then the mandate must be specific as to what type of masks really work. What I've seen in the schools are ill-fitted masks, cloth masks, and improperly used masks that is not an effective personal protective equipment program. For this reason, the mask mandate should not be in any way be extended.
You have um one more minute. Would you like to continue? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I would like to maybe, when someone has something to say, just let them finish. That's my recommendation. Right? We're having a discussion. Can we just pretend that it's noon hill grill, but I've seen you all there without masks on? And it hasn't been a big deal? Can we pretend that it's noon hill grill and take the mask off?
Sorry, Flavia, this is a meeting, a public meeting.
I am an expert in this field. This is what I do.
All right, thank you, Flavia. This is a public meeting. So do I have somebody else who would like to come up and do a three minute statement? No? Okay, thank you all very much. I'm sorry that you feel like you would have preferred more time. We need to be equal.
Out your jackets.
All right, thank you very much. The next item is um under old business, it's the new elementary school update. Dr. Marston or um May or Leo?
So I'll just, I'll just say that uh last week, uh we were in front of the Mass School Building Authority Board of Directors in which our project, uh which is the new elementary school at the Wheelock campus, uh was presented to MSBA um and was approved by MSBA unanimously. So just really happy that we we got through that um that milestone in this project. And I know that certainly we have our town meeting coming up this week and we've been, you know, having lots of conversations with people and presentations and community forums and everything else, so um it all comes down to Sunday.
All right.
That um, you know, we did get letters of support from Denise Garlick and Sean Dewey and Mr. Fimi and also Jake Offenclaw, so I thought that was very um worthwhile to to mention.
All supporting the project.
Yes, correct.
The the new elementary project.
All right, um, now we, uh, would anybody like to make any comment about the elementary school project right now? Do you have a?
I urge everyone to get up.
If anybody would like to approach the podium and for um.
I just, I just wanna know.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, you do. I'm so sorry.
I'm John Byrne at Twenty One Hearthstone Drive. Uh, so I I'm trying to understand the um the project before Sunday. My wife and I plan on going to vote uh to be there for it. The only real information that, and I know, I understand that this committee is likely more gonna be on the pro, the yes side. Um, so what I'm trying to understand, I've, when I look at these types of situations, I always try to understand both sides. And I'm not getting a lot of really clear information on the the no side. The um, see, the information that I've been able to gather seems like, forgive me, but it seems more propagandish than it does like actual information. Um, and so is, I'm just wondering, does anybody that?
From the no side or from the yes side on that?
No, on on the 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 no side.
So no meaning of vote that would.
That keeps it at a dale. Whatever, the the no side, I think, is the one that keeps it at a dale.
No, it kills the project.
Kills the project. That's what I mean. Right, right. Um, right, yes. So is there, is there anything that you folks can provide that kind of gives a more kind of global scope of of kind of big picture? Is there anything that you guys?
I can put some of this up later. So Sunday's vote, Sunday's vote is um to vote yes to build a new elementary school at the Wheelock site.
Yeah.
And take advantage of the almost twenty million dollars from MSBA. A no vote for goes that. That's essentially it.
And I do want to, actually, I know that Dr. Marston sent out, just to um, sent out a email. Uh, that was daytime in place, um, which is all that as a committee, we can actually provide. However, there is, uh, all of the information is on the website for the uh new elementary school project.
Right. Then of course, that's gonna be more the yes side.
It's gonna show you the entire process.
Well, we, as a committee, we've we've approved and are in favor of the project for reasons that have accumulated over three years.
Can I, can I just suggest that, um, so the warrant committee, the independent body, they're, they did a a deep dive on water, repurposing, dale, you know, open face, et cetera, that, you know.
And those are all the kind of points that I've been hearing that are.
Yes. So I would highly suggest going on the warrant committee's school project subcommittee website. They've got videos, they've got minutes where they have timestamps of who spoke when, what, you know, under what topic. And I I think that is what you're looking for, that independent.
List of questions and answers.
Exactly.
Place to find answers.
And then their summation is on October the fourteenth, which is a really important, um, you know, that all their findings. And actually, the warrant committee tomorrow night is making, is voting on um was not last week, but the the warrant committee is gonna vote tomorrow night in terms of how they're gonna lay on this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Okay. Um, let's see. So Dr. Marston, we're gonna move on to donations.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I ask that you approve the following donations. Um, three hundred ninety dollars from Wheelock Angel Fund to Wheelock Student Activity Account. Two thousand two hundred fifty dollars from the Wheelock PTO to offset cost of the permit for tuxed field trips. Four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents from Memorial PTO to the Memorial School Gift Account to support Memorial Crayon Grant. I ask that you approve as presented.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the donation as presented by Dr. Marston? Move in a may. Uh, you guys wanna flip it better? I'll just call Megan. All right. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, motion is approved unanimously. And we will move on to informational items. Um, and if I can just give a a couple quick ones, uh, how many of us will be at the MASC either virtually or in person this week? So you'll be there, I'll be there, which is why we're meeting tonight. You're virtual and Anime is like, are you out of your mind? I'm so busy.
This is the first one I've missed.
I know. All right. So we will be there, there's um and then uh this week, uh we spoke about the um school committee presenting a kind of a wrap up. Um, so what I'll do is I'll workshop that each with each of you, just to kind of give you a heads up. And if you could kind of give me feedback about that individually and not amongst everyone, I would very much appreciate it. And I'll probably be scrambling to do that sometime before the week ends. I don't think that there's anything that hasn't been said so far, but if you have points that you would like to give in uh four minutes, and I did speak with the moderator, and uh he thinks it's a good thing that the school committee also has a voice in this. Informational items from anybody else? Dr. Marston? Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't hear from Carrie.
Hi, Carrie.
How's it going?
Where are you over there? We should really get you kind of over on, over in this kind of start.
Have you been in senior lounge?
What is the senior lounge? It's it's like that place that like you hear about, but you've never been invited.
Is it like the teacher's room? Like, you don't really know what happens in there?
No, it's pretty open.
Oh, is it just right up here? Oh.
Underclassmen there, so. We made a sign for pep rally that says like seniors twenty twenty-two.
Oh, they know.
So it's the senior lounge? Is it official senior lounge?
Yeah, there's like a plaque there.
During policy, that's when you could have said something, but added to the handbook. No, actually, I didn't have that thing, but I felt like poor Carrie didn't have a a lot to say today, so I wanted to give her the opportunity, so.
I didn't wanna uh, a part of me was like, I didn't wanna put you on the spot immediately when uh when Dr. Farza, Dr. Far, uh, Mr. Parga and uh Ms. Whitley and Ms. Hagan were speaking. Because I didn't want you to be the one to be like, is that right, Carrie? Uh, and that's a really awkward place to be, but I also know that we've had some pretty cool discussions. About some of these things. So do you have anything that that struck you during that conversation?
How's your soccer coach?
I hear he is absolutely no good. Oh, sorry.
Oh, is he here?
Congratulations on making it playoffs. I'm assuming this is uh.
What's the general vibe?
What's the general vibe amongst the seniors? Like I remember my daughter graduated last year and this was a stressful time.
Yeah, um, well, today's November first. That's one like all very.
Oh, God, it's November first. Yeah.
Yeah, it's just crazy, but, um, yeah, I think like with pep rally and spirit week last week, we like, everyone was very like. Good vibes.
Good.
Um, and then now, once we get past November first deadline, it's even better.
What are you doing here?
Do you have a couple you're?
You know, I told you, always take.
No, I'm good. I, I only have one more lap to do tonight. You just got to put my parents' credit card in.
Always in before midnight, it's like.
Well, best of luck and best of skill. You'll be fine. Truly, um. Other informational items.
Other than the fact that I haven't eaten it.
New hill grill in about six years.
Which I want the record to reply.
I've had lunch there with my mask on.
There it is.
I do love you.
It's hard to eat with your mask on.
It is.
Anyway. Hey, moving on. Uh, anything else? Megan, I, and Tim, if you could actually just a quick, uh, end thing. If you could think about what the next tranche of, um, policies are that you would like to maybe present at the next meeting.
Okay.
That'd be helpful. So we can just kind of get that first reading going. Anime?
Everybody come on Sunday.
It's, it's just.
It's going to be fun. I mean.
You have officially preceded me in like fun and we just will keep.
Oh, gosh.
We're not meeting before that.
I don't believe, I will certainly, uh, ask if that is something that we can do if that happens to happen. But I do not believe that we have any specific reason we need at this point. So we would obviously announce that by Thursday. Thursday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Today is today? Monday. I'm a little off because usually this would be Thursday.
I don't think we need to.
Yeah, I don't think so. No. I mean, there's nothing, uh, that we.
No, because you're going to apply by.
We can always.
Yeah.
We always kind of set that side apart, but I don't, that's on the part, but I think for this one, we're okay.
Okay.
So good vibes, good vibes for our, uh, future kids, for our town and for just generally participating in the process. Of being a legislative body. Right. Um, future agenda items next time, uh, aside from following up on the policies that we postponed, or the one policy that we postponed. Uh, we will have the middle school opening update and SPR follow-up. Uh, and that's on November eighteenth, the superintendent's evaluation and, uh. The, um, student advisory, uh, update in December. Um, and I know, Dr. Marston, we were contemplating moving that back, uh. A week. We should take a look at it. There were some things that we thought, uh, might be timed a little bit better if we moved it a week. Up into the month. So of course, that's also, you know, prime holiday season. So we'll try to be respectful of that. Um, but, and we'll let you know that. Uh, and then, uh, health advisory committee would be in either January or February. Okay. All right.
Try to leave Board of Health or the eighteen?
We can, uh, contact them and we can also talk about whether that needs to be, would we have a better idea of kind of where we're going right now, November eighteenth or December first? And, uh, the next meeting, uh, will be, um, November eighteenth. At seven PM and at that point, we will know how both of these votes go. All right. Thank you so much. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All right, I'll let Leo have this one. Do I have a second? All right, ten seconds. All right, all in favor? Don't anybody leave before all in favor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes unanimously, unanimously. And the meeting's adjourned at. Nine oh one. Thank you, Owen. Thank you, Andrea. Michael.